Good evening. I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order at March 17, 2014. If you stand with me for the Bledge Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose existence we are. We are a nation under God and in His support, with the ready and justice for all.
Thank you. And if I may, let me read the roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwab is absent. Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Altough.
Here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
And Mayor Hedges.
Here. Thank you. Second item is the agenda.
I'd like to make a correction to the agenda. For 7A, could we please add the LCTV resolution? And so the LCTV grant recommendations would be B, and some comprehensive tree plan would be C.
All right.
What's your...
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Well, okay. Any other additions or corrections? Okay. Well then, motion for... Okay.
I move to accept the changed agenda, corrected agenda.
Second.
Okay. In all in favor?
Yes.
Or yes?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on. The approval of minutes of previous meetings. We had a regular meeting on March 3, as well as a closed session. The regular meeting minutes appear in packets. Any additions or corrections to those?
I move we approve the regular meeting minutes of March 3.
I will second.
I move in second to adopt the minutes of the March 3 regular meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any votes? At half to four zero. Now, the closed session, the minutes were circulated. Any additions or corrections there?
I move that we approve the minutes of the closed session of March 3.
And I will second.
I move in second to approve the minutes of the closed session of March 3. All in favor?
Yes.
Moving on then to accounts payable. Those are in packets. Any questions or concerns?
I move that we approve accounts payable as presented.
I will second.
I move in second to adopt the accounts payable as presented. And for this, the roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwab is absent. Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Altough.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Item 5 is citizen comments for the items that do not appear on the agenda. So if there's something that's out on the agenda that you'd like to address the council over this evening, this will be the time to do it. I'd ask that you come to the podium to speak, and limit your comments to about five minutes. Yes, sir. Just step right up. Give your name.
Yeah, Bill Crown. There's a couple of things I wanted to bring to the board. And in talking to the Jim Hall, or the city manager, in reference to damage done to my home due to sewage backup.
You mentioned my name.
It may not have been you. It's the city manager. Is he here?
Yes, Mark Hopstein.
Thank you for the compliment, however.
Okay. Excuse me. Yeah, and I asked for some forms that's going to go through the Freedom of Information Act, and he said he could provide the information I needed. And basically, it was a lot of paperwork that didn't make any sense to me. I didn't understand it. I asked for policies, procedures, for maintenance of the drains in the city during the certain dates that I had given them. And he said there was no need to do that. He gave it to me. I sent that along with a letter, as well as a bill that was built to the city from Greg, who checked my drain a year and a half prior to that, found out it's clogged, and it had roots and ice in it, and it had nothing to do with my drain. And the city and him went and tried to remove it and couldn't. Eighteen months later, I have sewage backup, and I found roots at the main corner of Sibley and Valley Vista the size of my thumb. I talked to the gentleman that was running a scope through it, and it went as far as he could see in all four directions, from the trees on the corners. So that hadn't really been maintained for a long time. At least, no one's looked at it until I had a backup. The four criterias were met. I sent this to the insurance company. They denied it. They said they would fight it to the hill for the city after I gave Mr. Hall a copy of the receipt from Greg, showing that they tried to fix it eighteen months prior. And nothing was done. It wasn't flushed. I think it reports on the areas where I lived, but it was the surrounding areas of numbers of places that they fixed. After my damage, they came and did everything. They went through and emptied out all the drains and so forth. Now, today, we have a water main that broke on Valley Vista Drive, and I was told not to drink the water. They put a note on my door for a few days. I got another note today saying the water's clear, and I tasted the water. It tastes different. I don't know what it is, you know? I don't know what they did. I don't know if they fixed it or just plugged up the hole and rerouted the water. And if they did just reroute it and covered up the hole, when are they going to fix it? If not, I'm the one that called in, the cave in. I went down with a camera, stuck my camera down hole as far as I could see, and that camera took a shot quite a ways underneath the road. And all they did is fill the hole where the... They didn't dig it out. They didn't break the cement away, the blacktop, and do anything, just threw sand in it. But my picture shows that it goes quite a ways under there because the whole thing caved in. So I don't know how much damage is done. Do you know how much damage is done and has it been fixed?
We don't. That's a management decision in the process. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. We'll make sure that Mark, as well as Dan Distert and our DPW director, get on that and take care of it. But as far as the process with insurance and so forth, is that something between your insurance company and the city insurance company?
Oh, they paid me $7,500. I had to pay that to have all my walls cut in the basement and throw away $18,000 worth of furniture because they had a Class III sewage, they stated. Yeah, I paid that bill, and I'm in the process of remodeling my basement. But the situation is both my neighbors had it, and it was only four inches, but it's enough to destroy everything where they had to cut the walls for feet off, all the plywood and so forth. And my finished basement is now a disaster, and three times the insurance company has denied it after I gave them the positive, covering all four of the requirements for the city to take responsibility of it. So I guess I have to go through, you know, litigation with you guys.
Bill? Anyone else in care to address the council? Thank you for taking them. Then we'll move on to old business. Mark, there's some strategic plan updates.
This is the new report. I was not going to cover every item because every item is an update because it is a new report. A couple of things I'll point out, and then as we move along, I'll add dates when an item is updated, and then those will be added that I've covered. And then recall, we had a discussion under a mass meeting about if this format works. Let me know if it's not working. If that's any improvement, let me know. Certainly include a document. This is certainly a first look at it. One of the items is the SOF grant. We did receive word that we were 372, like 570,000 grand proposals submitted. We were not submitted for the first round, but it looks like we may be eligible in the third round, which would be 2016. And of course, it depends on whether or not the legislature appropriates the funding for it. Funding is special funding that's set aside to keep using the general fund. So we're pretty confident that we'll be seeing a SOF grant in about two years, which should be most early that was to help to put together a kind of set management plan for the storm sewer system. Couple of other highlights. Chief Buukua has been working on the community cleanup project and also the code enforcement process, and we can link back to you on that. And the recreation plan update, as I've been reporting, is moving forward, and the River Walk State Shoreway is going to be moving forward. And that's one of the...
Thank you. Moving on then to the new 7A of the LCTV resolutions. For this, we need a little bit of background. It'll open up for some public comment, but we have our city attorney, Dick Wentz, here. And Dick, will you bring us up to date?
You're happy to. Good evening. As I told you before I got here, I feel more like a historian than a lawyer, especially with regard to this matter. As I understand it, in talking to Mark, some question has arisen as to what is the appropriate composition of the LCTV Endowment Board? And so my purpose this evening is to try to give you some background information to answer that question because I think it's easily answered, and I'll be happy, obviously, to take on questions that you have. Let me take you through the history, which I was involved in, and in a little background. I put together a timeline based, really, on, I think, the backlog materials that you all have received prior to the meeting. And let me just summarize that timeline. In October of 2007, October 1, to be specific, the city council approved a motion to establish the endowment fund, approved a agreement. It was called a fund agreement that was with the Grand Rapids Community Foundation, and agreed to deposit the proceeds from the sale, the net proceeds from the sale of the cable TV system in the amount of $2,400,000 into that fund, which was kept and is currently being kept by the Grand Rapids Community Foundation. In April of the next year, April of 2008, the council approved a motion, which accomplished a couple of things at that point. One, it provided that only city projects would be considered, and only city projects that were capital improvement projects, that is bricks and mortar sorts of things, rather than using the money for operating or maintenance purposes. It also provided that the interest earned on the fund in a given year would be used to honor or pay for programs or projects that were up for consideration in the following year. And then the last thing that it did is it described a process for which the city council and only the city council would hear proposals presented directly by citizens or by city nonprofit groups. That created, as I think some of you who were around at that time created a lot of discussion amongst a number of citizens and including members of the council at that time as to whether or not that was an appropriate way to handle that funding. As a result of that, in November of 2008, the council approved a motion or a resolution that called for the establishment of this LCTV Endowment Board. And this board was given the charge of reviewing and making recommendations to the city council with respect to projects and programs where there was funding, there was a funding request. The composition of that board at that time in that resolution was as follows. One member was appointed by this council, the city council, who was an elected member of the city council. One board member was appointed by the Board of Trustees for Virginia Township. One member was appointed by the Board of Trustees of Lowell Charter Township. Another member, who was a resident of Lowell Charter Township, who was not an elected official, was appointed by Lowell Charter Township. And three residents of the city were appointed by the city council, who were not elected officials of the city. So that was a total of seven members. To this day, there are seven members on that endowment board, as is reflected in that action that was taken in 2008. The city council had the final determination of funding. That was provided also in that resolution and not the Grand Rapids Community Foundation. There was some discussion over whether or not the community foundation could veto a request, and it was decided that they could not as long as it was within their guidelines, which was spelled out and is spelled out in this agreement. The action taken in November of 2008 also changed or expanded upon the uses of the funds. And again, we're talking about the interest income that is earned on the fund, keeping the historical $2.4 million in place. And that action allowed consideration for projects, not only in the city, but also in the two townships. So proposals could be received from all three, for projects within all three jurisdictions. The proposals had to either come from a governmental entity or organization or a 501(c)(3) organization. There was a modification in the use of the funds. Routine operating costs were not permitted, but the door was left open for programs where you might have non-routine operating costs in connection with a project. And then finally, the action taken in November of 2008 said that you could not give a grant for any project that promoted or furthered a religious or political activity or purpose. So everything was fine, and everything was then established in November of 2008. The endowment board was established. In April of 2009, after the board had had some discussions, the endowment board had taken some discussions, had had some discussions with respect to how much money was available for them to make requests. And there was a change that was made, an action taken on April 6 by the city council, to change some wording in the resolution or the action that was taken in 2008. And it had to do with the funds that were available for use for projects. And the old wording said that you could spend the interest income in the interest income only. The new wording that was added or substituted, and this appropriate word was substituted, was that it was spendable based on the community foundation spending formula. And what that meant was this, that community foundation required, and requires today in the fund agreement, that the base amount always be maintained, or the $2.4 million. If you think back in 2008 and 2009, that was when we were in the midst of the last great depression. And so the value of investments had dropped significantly over that time. However, the interest income was still payable on some of these investments. And so the community foundation took the position, and rightly so, that you could only spend the interest income over and above what was available after you got up to that base amount. So first, you took interest income to build back up the value of the investment to $2.4 million. And then, after that, you could use the money for projects or programs that had been proposed. And that was the action that was taken at that time. Unfortunately, what happened is that language got inserted in the wrong resolution. It was a clerical error, and it should not have been. It should have been a separate action that simply reflected the fact that this language had been changed. So then the next action, and really the final action that took place, was in August of 2009. And someone noticed in that resolution or that action that took place in April that there was some old language in there that talked about there happened to be a dollar for dollar match. Well, that was never, it has never been a requirement, but it wasn't one of the resolutions that was sort of never formally considered, but was offered. And so that, what they did is they took the resolution then that was adopted in August of 2009 and took out the one-for-one match, but in that same resolution was this addition of an additional board person, which was, would make it one more or eight people selected by the rest of the board. But that has never been adopted by this, by the council. The city council has never adopted that. And so I think if you go through this, you'll see that the board is, as it's currently constituted, it's made up of those seven people, and those seven people consider projects and programs and make recommendations to you as the city council. I have brought with me a resolution which clarifies that, and if the council were willing to consider that, I can pass that out. But let me ask first if anyone has any questions.
That is exactly how I remembered this whole scene and going back on all this documentation. It seems pretty clear. But that's what happened.
I think you were the one that noticed the three, the match, right? The one that...
Actually, I think Jim Hall was attending a meeting, and he said, "Now, wait a minute. So is this..." And I'm like, "No, we took that out. Why is that still in here?" And brought it back, and did notice the other half had been changed as well. So I remember that clearly. Thanks for the history lesson.
You're welcome.
This is very complicated.
It is.
We do have some members of the public here, and I suspect that somebody might want to make a few comments about this, so I would open that up at this time for any public input or, again, as I say, limit your comments to about five minutes. Anybody that would like to address the council concerning the LCTV endowment fund, this will be the time to do it.
Name's Barb Barber, 318 King Street, Lowell, Michigan. And I just had a couple of comments and a question for Mr. Wentz. You talked about a new resolution that you're going to have put before the council tonight. Is that basically what you just described, or is this something new?
Can I answer that?
Yes.
It's basically what I described. What it simply says, it clarifies and confirms and ratifies the fact that the endowment board consists of the seven members that I mentioned, I just mentioned. And that's all it does.
Okay. I guess I don't understand the need for that, but if it doesn't make any changes, I'm satisfied. The other thing is that I understand that last year and this year, the city has asked for and been granted $50,000 for street repairs. And I question whether that should be done or not. According to the government Internal Revenue Code, first and foremost, all distributions from this fund can only be used for charitable purposes. I do not find fixing our streets something that should be taken care of with our tax dollars, which is a maintenance issue, should be taken. This money, it should be used for some of our charitable organizations around town in use for that. That's my own point. Thank you.
Barb?
Can I respond?
Oh, all right.
In response to that question, that isn't exactly accurate. The fund agreement provides, and let me just read it to you. "The fund will be used only for charitable, educational, scientific, or literary purposes, including the furtherance of public health, safety, and welfare benefiting residents of the city." And included in that, and then there's some other language, "to aid the donor," which means the city, "in furtherance of its public purposes and for no other purposes." So it's much broader than what the speaker indicated.
Okay. Any other questions?
Peggy Covert, 982 North Washington Road, City Council. And first of all, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day. I don't know how many of you are Irish. I assume you are.
There is something.
A little bit. And thank you for the history. That really does help to kind of clarify some things, and I do appreciate that. First of all, I have been asked by Kent McKay, son of Dr. Earl McKay, one of the original founders of Lowell Cable TV, to read a statement on his behalf, if that's, if you knew that. And he says, "I am sorry circumstances prohibit me from attending the meeting in person. I am very disappointed the city council of today is not familiar with or honoring the intentions of those who served our city so well in the past. I recall many times while growing up, hearing discussions at home between my father, King Doyle, Ivy Blau, and Ernie Forman. One of, each one was very proud of how Lowell was growing into an ever more self-sufficient community, one who provided their own cable TV services, generated its own electricity, and offered families a hometown that they could be proud to show their visitors. Paramount in this pride was the idea that the then brand-new cable TV company would be financially independent and would give residents lower rates, better service, and keep up with technology. Secondary was their insistence that any profit created would be used to visibly improve life in our city. How sad the current thinking is to balance the budget any way possible, even when that includes moving funds from any available account. This was certainly not the intention of our past leaders. Regards, Kent McKay." And then I would like to make my own statement. Our Lowell Cable TV was originally set up to bring the Lowell community programming for the arts, entertainment, and education. When sold, the money was meant to go for those same things, not to supplement the city budget. The city originally told the founders of the cable TV that they were on their own. They basically washed their hands of it. So then the cable TV became owned by the subscribers, who put their money and trust into it and their founders, and its founders. Those sitting on the LCTV Endowment Board do not represent just their municipality. They represent the former cable subscribers of the Lowell community, whose money this really is. It is their fiduciary responsibility to make their decisions according to the criteria set forth in the fund. And as I understand it, I know you gave some of the basics on it, but as I understand it, the original criteria that was set forth was, A, does the proposed project benefit a broad segment of the Lowell area community? B, does the proposed project enhance the quality of life in the area? And C, does the proposed project encourage cooperation among the communities? D, does the proposed project qualify as a one-time capital improvement project? And E, how important is our funding to the completion of that project? Because this is an ongoing endowment fund, any money not allotted under these very specific criteria should simply be reinvested until it can be allotted for those things and not spent on budgetary items. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, but could you provide a copy of Kent McKay's and your letter to the city manager?
Sure. I'll get copies.
Barb, would you mind giving those copies? And they will get the original back for you.
I'll make copies and get them to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Tyler Kent, 1700 Faith Drive. I just wanted to make a few comments about the roads here in the city of Lowell. And I do realize that this council is made up of everyone from the townships and the city of Lowell, and it is supposed to be divided up. The money is supposed to be divided up between each section of it because we are all at one point customers. And though I would like to see the money invested in charitable contributions, and, you know, maybe it needs old flower pots along the side of the road, but I would like to see the road repaired. The economy of this city and her resulting townships needs to be roads, and the roads help the community function and the economy function. And I think, you know, reconstruction, rehabilitation, those are actual, I think, what an attorney, I can't remember what his name, Wentz, just said, is that those are under the criteria. It's not a maintenance program. It's a rehabilitation program, and that does fall under the criteria. And if we do repair these roads the correct way, then we don't have to go out there with pop every week or so and then repair them. So I would like to see, I'd like to see these roads fixed. That's all I would have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jim Salzweedl, 505 North Jefferson. I'm not sure exactly what $50,000 can spend if we are looking at repairing the roads. I don't know if that's patch on top of patch, but driving up and down our streets, I am somewhat embarrassed, and I'm not sure of what you guys think when you guys drive up and down our fair streets of Lowell. It's actually embarrassing. I'd actually have people take two, three streets different just to get to my house, because that's what kind of problem that I think that law should be. And I believe there's supposed to be city dollars set aside for those repairs. I don't know where that funding's gone for all these years, but I am concerned, and, you know, we just need to move forward. I just don't know if $50,000 is going to repair the streets that we have today. I think it's just a patch on top of a patch. Thanks.
Anyone else choose to address the council?
Greg Cantfield, 403 North Washington. I agree with some of the other past speakers here. The roads are in terrible shape. The winter was horrible, very unusual, and these are unusual times. I did want to correct one thing. Peggy, you mentioned that the Lowell light and power, or the cable people were shareholders. Because you purchase cable services from Lowell Cable TV, just like buying groceries at Myers, that does not make you a shareholder. The money is great. We're keeping it here in the community, but I think spending it on the roads is a good thing. This isn't going to be a year-after-year thing, but it was an unusual situation. But because you purchase services from, does not make you a shareholder. It was something for the community, but just like buying groceries at Myers doesn't make you a shareholder at Myers. Just an opinion.
Saying none, we'll bring it back to council comments, and thanks, Scott, for that resolution that you was mentioning.
If you'd like, I could read it.
Oh, yes, that might be cool.
It's entitled, "Resolution Clarifying Composition of LCTV Endowment Board. Whereas the City Council Pursued a Resolution Number 2408, adopted November 3, 2008, created the LCTV Endowment Board for the purpose of soliciting and receiving requests for distributions of the annual investments. Earnings realized from the LCTV Fund in advising and making recommendations to the city council with respect to such requests. Whereas Resolution Number 2408 further provided the composition of the seven-member LCTV Board consisting: One councilman, who is selected by the city council; One board member of the Virgin Township Board of Trustees, selected by such board; One board member of the Lowell Charter Township Board of Trustees, selected by such board; One Lowell Charter Township resident that is not an elected official of the Lowell Charter Township Board, selected by the Lowell Charter Township Board of Trustees; And three residents of the city that are not elected officials of the city, selected by the city council. And whereas the current composition of the LCTV Endowment Board is as provided in Resolution Number 2408, and whereas action taken by the city council on April 6, 2009, and August 3, 2009, and Resolution Number 9090, and 20-09, caused confusion related to the composition of the LCTV Endowment Board requiring clarification, now therefore be it resolved. It is hereby ratified and confirmed that the LCTV Endowment Board consists of the following: A, one member who shall be a city council member selected by the city council; B, one member who shall be a board member of the Virgin Township Board of Trustees, selected by the Virgin Township Board of Trustees; C, one member who shall be a board member of the Lowell Charter Township Board of Trustees, selected by the Lowell Charter Township Board of Trustees; D, one member who is a resident of Lowell Charter Township, but not an elected official of the township, selected by the Lowell Charter Township Board; and E, three members who are residents of the city, but not elected officials of the city, selected by the city council. To all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, are rescinded. That's the resolution.
Thank you. Any other council members or questions?
Sounds like Housekeeping added to me that we approved this resolution.
Could I please, um, do you have to do that first, and then I get to talk?
Yep. I'll second. Now?
Let me second. Okay, now I can talk?
Now.
Okay. I just want to make a statement, because here we are back, deja vu, 100 years, and I get to say this, but when we were setting this up, a long, long time ago, there was $331,000 that was the last and final payment for the cable TV. And I made a motion to put that into the streets and the equipment fund, and about these two people sitting on this board that voted against me on that. And now, after we went through all this to get this all set up so that it would be nice for the city, now you want to start raping this fund for the streets. And we wouldn't be here, maybe, if you guys would have thought a little bit, you know, a little bit different. But anyways, I just want to make that statement, and I just don't understand why it's so hard to write a resolution and have it right, but I do think we have to work on this so that this never happens again, because this is ridiculous. I mean, we put our trust in the people that work under us, and then here we are. How many times is this? Five, six? And it's, I don't know, I don't know if it's, I don't know who it is, but basically, we shouldn't even be doing this again. It's ridiculous. But that's all I'll say.
I'd like to speak too. I remember when you wanted to do that, and I remember not being in favor of it, because I wanted all the funds to go into this perpetual fund, and that is why I was opposed at the time. If we'd have spent that money on the streets, it'd be gone. Now we have this perpetual fund. That fund is there for things that are needed, things that are wanted, and the streets are one of those things. I feel like we're raping the fund when someone asks for something you need. So that's my opinion, and that's, you know, I mean, the board, we had lots of discussions. There are as many opinions out there in the audience as there were in the board. You know, we don't need to be reminded of our responsibilities. Every person on that board takes it seriously. It takes us hours to go through all these and consider all these and what's right. And it seems like we go back to this very basic discussion every time, every, not every seven years, but every year. We always go back, are we doing the right thing? Is this what it was meant for? So I don't think we need to be reminded of our responsibilities. No one is taking it lightly. I think anybody who applies for something that fits within the qualification, whether it's a need or a want, should be considered, and that's what the board did. I don't think there's anything pegged ahead of time that it's a done deal. All things are received and considered, so I don't consider that raping the street or raping the fund for streets. I think it was an application that was submitted, and it's, you know, was considered along with many others.
Okay, now I get to say, talk again. We also discussed when we started this fund that if there wasn't any need to spend the money, if a lot of people didn't apply, that we would set it aside so that if there was a big project, we could do a big project, but...
And that's happened before. When we first wanted to build up that balance, we decided one year not to do anything. When we first started it, the first year, we said, "We can't decide on the board. Let's hold it, because we can't decide." So I think if that would, you know, if there would be some, a bunch of applications that we didn't feel were qualified, I don't think the board would have any problem with saying, "We're not spending it this year."
Okay.
I know that street fund, that $50,000 was not a whole street. It was matching funds for granted. If we don't use it, we lose it, so...
We don't, we don't...
That wasn't $50,000 is going to fix this.
This isn't a budget thing right now, but we'll talk about that later.
But anyway, so that's, you know, we consider it everything.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? And now then, as a resolution, I ask for a vote.
Councilmember Schwan is answered. Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hages.
Yes. Moving on then to 7B, the LCTV grant recommendations. And, I don't know, Barb, you gonna read this, or?
I think there comes under Ellison.
Um, yes.
That's the council representative of the fund, yes.
And Dennis Kent, our, the chair of the committee, is here. I don't know if he wants to get up and address this, but, you know...
You want?
Can you want to speak?
I'll wait till you come.
Okay. I was just going to say, just what I just said, this, we considered all the applications. We had a very long discussion. I might point out that the only fully funded application recommendations are for the Balsberg Historical Society, for the Kent County Youth Association, and for the Lowell Schools. So, you know, when you go through the recommendations, those are the only ones that everyone agreed on fully funding them. Just a comment. That was a mistake. We funded half of it last year.
Oh, okay.
Even though it says not the full amount for the fair, we gave them half the money last year, so they just submitted the same application.
All right. Any questions or concerns? Dennis, if you'd like to come in. As chairperson of this council board?
As long as it...
We had to turn it on.
Dennis Kent, 1700 Faith Drive, Lowell. I am the chair of the, current chair of the Lowell Cable TV Board, and I guess just maybe, just to kind of briefly address some of the comments before. I've been on the board since the beginning, and, you know, I know there's people on the board and people in this community that don't necessarily completely agree on how to spend the money, but we, as Sharon said, we review all the applications. We look at them based on the eligibility as described in the resolutions and the merits of the projects, and I think we've done a pretty good job of balancing projects by type. We've done some that are more, more capital expenditure, bricks and mortars, if you will, for the library, for streets. We've also done some trails. We've done some educational, some educational programs. I think we've tried hard to balance the fund amongst a number of uses, and we haven't, we haven't tried to, you know, take any one project and use all of the funding, but there's probably been opportunities to do that. So this, again, this year, I think is a good, we've done a good job of balancing, balancing the program. We've spent a fair amount, I think it was set about $50,000 on the street, which is roughly half of the grant, or half of the funds we're allowed to spend out of the program, but the other half was, went to other types of expenditures. Like I said, I think over time, we've done a, we've tried to do a decent job of balancing, balancing the types of grants. And I am the board, as well as the rest of the board, support this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, House.
I recommend that we approve the Endowment Board recommendations as presented.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Then moved, well, thank you. My mistake. Thank you. Been moved, seconded to accept these recommendations for these allocations. And all in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Okay.
For these anticipated projects is about $20,000. I'd like to thank our urban board right now, that consists of myself and Sharon Ellison, Daniel Ware, and Melissa Spino. There is a vacancy, so if there are any other city residents that would like to be on the board, I'd like to encourage you to apply. And we are appointed by the mayor, so mayor's the person you need to write a letter to if you're interested in being on our board. Also like to thank Dan Destar, he comes to our meetings, and he's been very valuable as far as helping coordinate. I know he's just an employee, but he does, we do take up some of his time. Sue Eller, our recourse, minutes for our reading, and I appreciate that very much, Sue. And just like to thank the city council for continuing to fund us, and the funding that we do get, the Look Fund, the LCTV that you're talking about tonight, they have funded us in the past, the Lowell Community Fund also, as well as the city. So, any questions for me?
It's a very good comprehensive plan, so it's good to have a plan.
Yes. And at that, we just need a, urban observations, and we should have a three-city USA designation again.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
I move that we adopt the 2014-15 comprehensive tree plan.
Now, second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the comprehensive tree plan. All in favor?
Yes.
And you both, if that's a four-zero. Thank you. Now, moving on, item eight is monthly reports. Those are the packet, concerns, questions, mighty fine reading there. Moving on then to item nine, council comments. Councilmember Althoff.
I missed the DDAV. I had to work that day and couldn't make it, but I think I'm going to have councilmember Al take that over for me, if you would, until I get some extra time, if I will or not, but...
Of course I will. We serve free food.
I did go to the airport meeting now, and they are, they have some projects that they'd like to do, and I found out that back in, I don't know, it was a few years ago, it was another deja vu deal, that we had some work done out there, and we hired an engineer firm, and they didn't do things quite right. So that's going to come back to us again here sometime to maybe fix. But they do have some good plans out there, and I know that there's a lot of people that think the airport's just the rich boys' playground, but it could serve, it could better us a lot, because the Grand Rapids Airport is starting to squeeze the little guys out, and they're going to Greenville, they're going to Grandville, they're going to Hastings, and with just a little bit of work out here, they could be coming here. And we have a lot of businesses in town that have younger employees that are out on the road, and quite a few of them are taking up flying, and it is a way to commute, so I think, I think that all the guys out there on that board are doing a good job, and we should really, really keep an eye on them and help them out as much as we can. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Paul, planning commission, we once again approved plans for O'Reilly Auto Parts, so hopefully they are on their way to home. hopefully they are on their way to Lowell, but it's a wait and see. Lowell Area Recreation Authority, they hold me so highly in their regard that I was unable to attend, so I was the quarter, so there was no meaning. In regards to my, the LCTV Fund, I don't believe it's a fund that anybody but city people would block. I think it's all city money. It belongs in the city. The LCTV Fund allows the council to override whatever the commission has voted for, so now it's a council decision. We'll leave it at that until I hear the line. Thank you.
Mayor Brodman?
Well, you just saw the results of the Arbor Board meeting, so we've been working very hard on the tree plan, and not sure how much of that we'll be able to accomplish, but we do have the plan in place, so if we get enough funding, we'll do those projects. The LCTV Endowment Board, you heard the results of that, so that was a many hours spent on that, and I guess that is left to be determined, but thank you, everyone who did that. That was, those are not easy recommendations, and I'm not sure what happens from here. The Historic District Commission will be meeting at the end of the month, and I guess I'm just disappointed that, you know, the hard work did not be accepted by the City Council, considering it was all the entities together, so not sure where we are here, going from here, but kind of disappointing, and I guess we'll just have further discussions about that. Thanks.
Lowell Light Power Board met last week, and I'd like to thank the great leadership of Greg Campfield and that group. The Light Power Board seems to be progressing quite well. The Light Power is doing well. Biodegester's underway, and we look forward to good things happening there. The Chamber of Commerce this weekend, this Saturday, is expo up at the high school, so make sure you attend that, after the pancake breakfast at the fire station. So support our Lowell Area Fire Authority, and it's always a good place to hang out, be seen, and as well as enjoy a wonderful breakfast before going up to expo. And Liz and the group with the Chamber of Commerce always does a great job of pulling that together. It's a place to collect all the refrigerator magnets you'd ever need and learn about other entities that serve our community, not just within the city, but within the greater whole area. And Look Memorial Fund will meet in May, and so we're heading forward with that particular process. And with that, a manager's report. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Also, City Clerk Benny Moron has returned to work on a part-time basis. We're happy to have her back. It was nice to hear her voice in City Hall again, and we certainly stand behind her as she begins her new journey. The city at Lowell will have a booth at the Lowell Community Expo, March 22, at Lowell High School. We will have initial concept designs for the Riverwalk showboat stage area, and so we really encourage people to stop by the expo, to take a look at those initial concepts, initial designs. There will be a feedback form that people can fill out right there and leave with us, or they can take it with them and fill it out later and drop it off to us, or they can also fill that out on, on the internet. There will be a web connection for it. So we're looking for as much public input as we can get on, on that planning process. We have also, somebody told me today that this was flood awareness week, and it just so happens that this is the week that we've scheduled a tabletop exercise to review our plans in case we do have another flood. We've been fortunate so far, maybe I shouldn't say that, I will knock on wood, that the, the thaw of the snow that we got this winter has been going fairly slowly. We're watching the National Weather Service projections. Mark Munt told me that he just took a river reading today, and we're somewhere around nine feet, and so we're getting together later this week, and we're going to look over our notes from last year and talk about what we did, what we did well, what we can improve upon, and certainly if anybody thinks of anything, in the meantime, if they wanted to send in, oh, give me a call, send me an email, stop in, we'd certainly like to hear any comments from folks that were around last year when, when we had the flood, but we're getting ready. Hopefully it doesn't happen, but we are making plans. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Item 11 is board appointments, or the Arbor Board does have some vacancies, so usually that comes from Light Power Board, but if anyone would like to serve, since we heard about the Arbor Board, let the mayor know about that.
I think that we go into closed session at 8 o'clock.
Hold on a second.
We go into closed session, for this we need a roll call.
Councilmember Schwab is absent. Councilmember Schwab is absent. Councilmember Hall?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison?
Yes.
And Mayor Hages?
Yes. Thank you.